I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a prayer from Jerome Sack at Westfield Radiant Christian Life, sorry about that.
I pledge allegiance to my life in the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and evergreen.
Let us pray. Father God, we pray that you would bless this city council meeting this evening. We thank you for raising up leaders committed to the best interests of our city. We thank you for those in the past that you've granted wisdom and insight to who laid the foundations of this community that we are blessed to call home. We pray that you would grant this council similar insight and wisdom. Insight as they steward our resources and discernment as they make decisions amongst competing priorities. May the prayer of the Psalmists be our prayer too. Would you give us clean hands? Would you give us pure hearts? I humbly submit this in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
President Tam, would you like to run the meeting, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you as well to Pastor Sack this evening, particularly for a prayer for discernment as well. May we notice the presence of the quorum.
We may.
Thank you.
Noah Heron.
Here.
Chad Huff. Victor McCarty.
Here.
Patrick Tam.
Here.
Kurt Waninger.
Here.
John Dart.
Here.
Joe Deppner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The next meeting on, excuse me, item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, meeting minutes for August 26, 2024. I'm assuming that we've all had a chance to review those. We need a motion in a second.
After reviewing the minutes, I make a recommendation to approve the minute, meeting minutes from August 26, 2024. A second?
We have a motion made by Councilor Waniger, a second by Councilor Dart. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the docket for September 9, 2024 for approval, assuming all of us have had a chance to review the docket. We need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve docket for September or for a prior council meeting. Second?
We have a motion made by Councilor Dart, a second by Councilor McCarty. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Director Todd, do we have any residents that wish to address the council this evening?
Thank you.
We have a special business this evening, a presentation by Mr. Ernest on residential units and looking forward to this this evening. Sir?
Thank you.
So before we get into this, we're going to talk about the terminology that we're going to be seeing in all this data, just so that way we're all on the same page about what we're seeing. We're going to go through relatively quickly, as I'm sure that most of you are familiar with some of the terminology here. First, we're going to talk about zoning. Just a reminder that the city has a unique situation where we have zoning jurisdiction over the corporate limits as well as the entire township limits. So when you see the data that we're talking about here tonight, it's over everything, the city and the township limits. So it's all of the inventory of our housing that we have. So every property in the city and the township is assigned or zoned a zoning district. And there's essentially two types of zoning. We have straight zoned and PUD. Straight zoning is a zoning district that's established at the time when zoning districts were assigned to every property. So unless it was rezoned to another district, and typically there's no third party involved as these properties were zoned. It is abbreviated STZ that you'll see on some of the charts that we'll show here. Examples of this are our straight zone districts, AGSF1, our SF districts, multifamily districts. The differences between these is the lot area, setbacks, lot width, et cetera. Just as an example, we have US 31 to the west, State Road 32 to the south. Everything highlighted in a blue rectangle is an example of your straight zone zoning districts. On the zoning map, that's typical to be your colored, the yellow, the green, the brown, the beige, those different colors that show up on the map. For a PUD, a planned unit development, it's either a new or an amended zoning district. It's typically proposed and approved by a third-party developer. Essentially, it creates new standards. It's a set of standards that's overlaid on top of a zoning district. So the zoning districts that we just were shown on the screen, PUD is overlaid on top of those. In most cases, it's created by a third party. Again, PUD stands for Planned Unit Development. Examples Maple Knoll, Lantern Commons, North Point, et cetera. Same graphic highlighted in blue, the crosshatched filling, Northwog Junction North, Sheffield Park, those are all examples of PUD zoned. Shifting over to housing stock, we're going to talk about two different type of units that we're going to be showing you, our single-family units and our multifamily units. Our single-family units consist of single-family homes. It's going to be abbreviated with SF for single-family. And a single-family home typically means that there's one unit on an individual lot. For multifamily, this could comprise of apartments, duplexes, or townhome units. Multifamily will be abbreviated using MF. And typically, there is more than one unit on an individual lot and/or within the same So for organizational purposes, we're organizing the data into different categories. We're organizing them into existing units and expecting units. For existing units, we're breaking it down even further. For existing units, we're going to be talking about the status of the subdivision that these units are in. So the subdivision is either 100% built or it's not 100% built. And for expected units, we're talking about units that are completing construction and construction has not started on these subdivisions. So quickly exploring here, the 100% built-out category is referring to units that have been built in fully completed subdivisions. So there's no more room for future units. This includes both straight zoned and PUD subdivisions. An example, we have 169th Street to the north, and we have Spring Mill Road to the east. This is Keeneland Park. This is an example of 100% built-out subdivision. There's no more land, there's no more room to add another unit in here. We'll add a disclaimer that some of the subdivisions in this category are considered geographically built out. This means that even though the subdivision was approved for a certain amount of units, not all those units were or are ever going to be built. Example of this is Lantern Park. We have Westfield Boulevard to the west, 161st Street to the south. Lantern Park was approved for 60, six zero, single-family units, but only 58 of them were actually built. So it's geographically built out with 58 units, meaning that technically two units are still permitted in here. So for the purposes of this 100% built category, the 58 units would be counted, not the 60.
So what took place, Caleb, that eliminated the other two? I mean, was it that one down in the left-hand corner was considered a lot?
Probably before it went through different agencies that reviewed this, such as utility companies, they needed land for utility expansions or facilities. Recently, there was a utility that just updated there right in the corner. So it was probably an easement or additional easement appropriations that were needed on land, either that right-of-way or drainage, floodplain-related issues. That's my educated guess without going into further detail. It's not often that that occurs. So not subdivisions where it's not 100% built out. Just to clarify, these are units that are built and located in subdivisions that are partially completed. So these are located in unfinished subdivisions. This includes PUD subdivisions. And as an example, we're going to talk about Orchard View. It was approved for 279 units and currently 184 are built right now. 95 units remain to be built in the subdivision. So for this category, not 100% built includes only the 184 units. And this is Orchard View on the screen. What is highlighted in blue is 184 units that are currently built. Going to expected units, completing construction are units that will be completing construction in those partially completed subdivisions. So same example, we have Orchard View. The 95 units that are remain to be built is what is included in this category. Same aerial highlighted in blue, that is where the 95 units will go. We know that for a fact. It's typically planted, so it's just a matter of time that they will be built. The last category, construction has not started, this is simply units that have not started construction at all. So they're approved to be built, but they just not have, they have not started building. So an example, the Ravinia PUD, it was approved this year for 187 units. So this category includes all 187 units. Here's the Westgate Neighborhood to the north and west, 166th Street to the south and Ditch Road to the east. Highlighted in blues where Ravinia is going, there is no construction activity, so construction has not occurred yet. So it's important to cover some averages as some of the projections that we'll be showing is based on these averages. For single-family permits, we track how many permits by the end of the year. So in 2019, there were 706 single-family permits, 2020, 994, and so on. This puts the five-year average at 1,065 single-family permits a year. What this means is that there is 1,065 single-family units a year that are coming onboard, that are open for people to occupy. And for multifamily, instead of looking at just the permits, we had to look at the certificates of occupancy, as the permit itself could have multiple buildings or units on it. So the certificates of occupancy actually claim what is, which unit is coming onboard and which one is occupied. So as an example, 2019, 138 multifamily units were available, 2020, 265, and so on. That's a five-year average of about 347 units a year, meaning that 347 units of multifamily were coming onboard. So again, when we talk about single-family units, SF stands for single-family, and one single-family home equals a single-family unit. As we look at this graph to orient you, the blue is 100% built category, the orange is the not 100% built, gray is completing construction, and yellow, construction has not started. So 62% of all of our single-family homes have been fully, have been built in fully completed subdivisions. That's just over 15,000 units. 15% of all of our approved single-family homes are located in those subdivisions that are partially completed. It's about 3,600 units. 18% of all approved single-family homes will be completing construction. That's about 4,200 units. Lastly, 5% of all of our approved single-family homes have not started construction. That's about 1,200 units that are approved to be built but have not started construction. That's a total of just over 24,000 single-family units. This means is that currently there is just over 18,000 units that exist today. This also means that there's about 5,400 units that do not exist, but they're approved to be built at any time. Of the over 18,000 units that exist today, that equates approximately to 46,000 people. And then of the units that do not exist, that's approximately just over 13,000 people. So based on an average of that 1,065 building permits a year, future construction will take about five years to build out all of our single-family stock. That's four years for what we know will be completing in subdivisions that are unfinished, and about a year for the units where construction has not started. Going over to multifamily units, again MF stands for multifamily. And as a reminder, a multifamily home does not equal a multifamily unit. We should instead think of it as a building, whereas one multifamily building could equal to six townhomes, two duplex units, or 12 apartment units. So when we talk about a unit, we're talking about one single apartment unit, one single townhome, one single duplex unit. 49% of all approved multifamily homes have been built in those fully completed subdivisions. That's just over 4,400 units. 7% of all approved multifamily homes are located in partially completed subdivisions. That's 602 units. 15% will be completing construction. That's about 1,400 units. And 29% of all approved multifamily homes have not started construction. That's over 2,600 units. That's a total of just over 9,100 multifamily units. What this means is that currently there are just over 5,000 multifamily units that exist today. This also means that there's just over 4,000 multifamily units that do not exist but are approved to be built. Again, using our averages, or using the, the US Census Bureau has 2.5 people per unit. So what exists today, that's about 12 and a half thousand people, multifamily units that exist, and then just over 10,000 people for those units that do not exist. Based on the average of the 347 certificates of occupancy, future construction will take just under 12 years to build out. That's four years for what we know is coming in those unfinished subdivisions, and then just under eight years for construction that has not started. Now disclaimer here is that this is looking at it as isolated construction. This is not taking into account an overlap of multiple projects occurring at once. So if you take that into account, it might happen faster or slower depending on market. So this is just purely based on the averages of certificates, certificates of occupancy. To further break down the multifamily units, because again, remember this involves all apartments, townhomes, and duplexes. So we're going to break down, again, our total. We have 9,138 multifamily units. Just to orient ourselves, the graph on the left-hand side, the pie chart here, is not going to be the same as the bullet points brought up. So just to orient ourselves, of all of our multifamily unit stock, 48% are in the form of apartments, 23% are in the form of townhomes, and 18% are in the form of duplex units. There is 11% that's undefined. That means that these units have not been built and they're located in projects that do not define a specific type of multifamily unit. So that 980 units could be an apartment, a townhome, or a duplex unit. They're just not determined at this moment. So what this data means is that what is currently built right now in our community, 61% are apartment units, 16% are townhome units, and 23% are duplex units. What is located in unfinished subdivisions, we have 69% are in townhome units, 28% duplex, and 3% apartments. And then what is going to be completing construction in unfinished neighborhoods, we have 52% are apartments, 32% townhomes, 16% duplex units. And then what has not started construction, the majority are actually in that undefined category, yet to be determined. 36% are apartment units, 19% townhomes, and 8% duplex. Lastly, in combining all of it together, so this is single-family and multifamily, 59% of all of our approved stock are in fully completed subdivisions. That's just over 19,000 units. 12% are located in subdivisions that are partially completed. It's over 4,100 units. 17% will be completing construction in those unfinished subdivisions. That's about 5,600 units. 12% of all of our approved stock has not started construction. That's about 3,800 units. What that means is that today, there's just over 23,000 units that exist today in our community. What this also means is that there's about 9,500 units that do not exist but are approved to be built. So using those averages, what exists in our community right now is about 59,000 people. And what does not exist but is approved to be built would equate to about 23,000 more This is the end of the presentation, so how's any questions that you have for me at this time? Thank you.
First of all, great information. Thank you for pulling that together. It's a lot of work, a lot of numbers to absorb, and really appreciate it. This, these numbers though are through 2023, correct?
This is updated as of July of this year.
July of '24.
Correct. Correct. Yes.
Do you have, have you extrapolated what permits would be this year? I mean, we're on a trend of increased permits. What's, what does the trend look like for the balance of '24? Any idea?
It looks like that we're on pace to match maybe our record in 2020. It's hard to tell in the last quarter here if we're going to outpace our record years such as 2018, 2021. Those are record years for permits, so.
Which, which is interesting with interest rates the way they are, that it still hasn't really impacted, I guess, the permits, right?
Right.
At least in, in Westfield.
At least in Westfield.
So another number, I don't think it's been thrown out here, but if you look at all of the housing in Westfield, whether it's complete or incomplete, 72% of all the units in Westfield are single-family, and 28% are other, which would be multifamily, duplexes, et cetera. I don't think that number was thrown out there, but I guess my question, my big question, one of my big questions is, how did, do we have any idea, I guess we could pull the numbers on how this compares to other Hamilton County cities, right? So how many, what, and I'm trying to understand, what is the right mix? Is there a right mix? Does it matter? How many more multifamily units does Westfield want and versus single-family? And I'm just kind of curious on how that compares with other Hamilton County cities and where they've landed. Somebody like Carmel who's kind of built out already, right? Where does that end up? So maybe that's something we could work on.
What we have done in the past is we have explored how we compare to other communities around here. It's just not been in the form of units. It's been in the form of acreage. So what I've done in the past is, because I have the resources here to look at every single project, so knowing this and with the coworkers I work with, it's easy to, to get this information on units. But for other communities, I'd have to go through every single project. We just don't have the capacity to do that. So we convert everything to acreage and we can easily allocate that per our GIS software. So we use that comparison. We, we transfer over from units to acreage, and we look at it from an acreage standpoint.
I think Baggy has that data.
Do they?
Yeah, and Baggy has put together in the past a packet of information that does a side-by-side comparison, and they can even tell you, hey, for a city our size, in this general area, you should have X percent of multifamily versus residential. That stuff's out there, and if you guys put together a list of what you'd like to see, I can certainly reach out to our Baggy rep and, and get that for you guys.
Yeah, I think Scott or Mayor, that would be interesting information. I think the other thing that you and I have talked about briefly is, I think what I'd like to also see is of, of single-family homes, what percentage of them are starter homes versus first step-up versus semi-custom and custom? I'm not sure if that's how they break them down. And then ultimately, do we have a vision for who we want to be or what we want to look like in the future? How many starting starter homes do we want? Because affordable housing is an issue, right? And I think if you talk to somebody else, they'll say, well, we need more custom homes. And today, I don't think we have an idea. We're approving a lot of developments, but I don't think we have an idea of what percentage of those homes are in the, in the specific price point.
It's really hard to predict because as you can imagine, as they're trying to assemble land, how much they assemble will drive that. So if it's a 40-acre infill, which is what we've been seeing a lot of lately because we're at the end of our comprehensive plan, you're not going to get a lot of, you're not going to get any custom homes in a 40-acre development. It's too expensive to get the utilities there. They need more density to pay for that cost. So how they assemble land over time will drive, it's really almost impossible to predict. You guys can certainly create a vision as council of, hey, we would like to see, you know, 20%, you know, custom versus, you know, 30% below 500,000, but those are really, you can put whatever you want out there, but the markets really drive that. And obviously, you got to have willing landowners who want to sell. And what's their land look like? As you guys know, there's some land that's a flat cornfield, you're not going to put million-dollar custom homes in, in that kind of development, so.
We'd like to make note that the comprehensive plan that we're engaging in right now with Rendell Ernstberger, we are on contract with them to perform a housing study, so that we'll be part of the comprehensive plan. So some of the questions that you're asking, they'll be explored in that housing study as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll send you a list of things that are floating around in my head around that, but fantastic job. Thank you, Caleb.
Welcome.
The other thing I'll add too is, for the first time, I think, well, the state's only gone through a comprehensive plan one other time, but we're partnering with the schools on this comprehensive plan, and they will have a seat at the table. So as we think about growth and, you know, the big challenge of Westfield is we've consistently outkicked the coverage of our school district, which has put a huge burden on the taxpayer around referendums. We're partnering with them to make sure that how we grow and where we grow, the schools are prepared to deal with that, that they'll have land there to support with schools, that we're not growing so fast they can't get the, the infrastructure in place to keep up with us. So I'm really excited. We've been talking a lot between myself and Dr. Kaiser, and they have a seat at the table, which I think's important.
Caleb, good presentation. Based on kind of the numbers that are up there right now, 59,380 people, another 23,892, so that's going to be over 74,000 in the next about 11 or 12 years. I had recently done some projections that put, I think, the population of Westfield around 70,000 in 2050, and then in 2070, I think where it's around 100,000 population projections that were moving forward. So this is actually ahead of that and, and kind of concerning that we're growing that quickly in that area. So have you guys done population trends associated with these numbers as well and kind of projections associated with that?
We have not, because the historical data on how many units were created at a certain time, it's kind of frozen in the year that it's created. It's challenging to go back on GIS and our other software to find the exact units. And we could probably be done again by acreage and we can reverse calculate it, but, so as far as, we could probably do 2022, when I first did this data, we can start the trends for '22, '23, '24, moving forward. But as a reference, the quick reference guide that's also attached to the agenda shows the numbers from 2022 in these pie charts and the numbers in '24. So you can create your own trend by following the differences. And from what you're, you're stating, I mean, that is accurate, that we are outgrowing what the trend was back in '22.
Yeah. And then also with that, I mean, our population per the census in 2022 is around 54,600 people, which this is already showing we're higher than that. And I think that's a presentation that I'll have later on the council meeting, so, to discuss that. Good presentation overall. I'd like to see a future presentation just on our kind of industrial commercial and those types of growth as well. And I think that would paint a good picture as well to see how, how we're growing or how we're kind of advancing in that area as well to kind of make up some of that tax, lost tax revenue, so. Okay? Thanks.
Welcome.
Just wanted to briefly echo the sentiments of, thank you for the presentation. Awesome job as always.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Any other comments, discussion this evening? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Anderson, greatly appreciate all the, all the work and then frankly, your department as well.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving on to old business this evening, we have ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash twenty-two, which is I Beach thirty-one at Grand Park Amendment One. We have Mr. Collingwood here this evening to do a brief introduction. I know the petitioner's here as well.
Yep, thank you, President. Good evening, council members. For the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item presented before you is the I Beach thirty-one at Grand Park PUD Amendment One proposal. The proposal is approximately four point one five cumulative acres at the northeast corner of East Hundred Eighty-First Street and Grand Park Boulevard. The I Beach Amendment proposal outlines incorporating additional real estate into the existing I Beach development. The already existing development encompasses about three acres, where the proposed real estate addition encompasses approximately one point one five acres located between the existing I Beach site and Grand Park Boulevard, as seen in the location map exhibit. As a, as a result of incorporating the additional real estate into the I Beach development, revised concept, plan and character exhibits were also established as part of the amendment request. This item was first introduced in April, had its public hearing in June and a workshop discussion in August. This item received a unanimous favorable recommendation at the APC September third meeting and is ready for adoption consideration at tonight's city council meeting. Eric Douthat of Church, Church Hiddle and Antrim is here tonight. He is available to answer any questions, as am I, if you guys have any for staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions this evening from Mr. Douthat or the petitioner? Seeing none, may we, we need a motion and a second?
Like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four twenty-two, I Beach thirty-one at Grand Park Amendment One.
Second. We have a motion made by Councilor Waniger, seconded by Councilor Heron. Any further discussion? I would like to compliment the petitioner for working through a, a pretty good process, but then also acquiring the additional parcel, which frankly, would be a tough parcel for, for someone else to develop, which I think only makes your business a great, even greater potential for the Grand Park area and frankly, for I Beach. And we appreciate that. Thank you. May we call the roll?
Chad Huff.
Yes, sir.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-seven, which is the courtyards at Cielo Ranch. Ms. Gillingham?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Lauren Gillingham Teague, I've got a new name now, with the Community Development Department. Item before you tonight is the adoption consideration for the proposed courtyards of Cielo Ranch, PUD ordinance, right there. The petition proposes to rezone Cielo Ranch, a thirty-six acre equestrian facility for, for the development of an eighty-lot, low-maintenance, age-restricted. We have an, an actual commitment now, an, an age-restricted Epcun community. The site is located east of the intersection of Hundred and Sixty-First Street and Oak Ridge Road, directly across the street from the Viking Meadows subdivision. Neighborhood meeting was held on June nineteenth of the courtyards of Carmel Clubhouse. There was a great turnout and neighbors enjoyed touring the, the courtyards of Carmel development. The petition received a public hearing at the July first APC meeting and a favorable recommendation at the September third meeting. Matt Skelton with Church, Church Hiddle and Antrim is also here to answer any questions, as am I. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Teague. My apologies, but also more importantly, our congratulations to you, so.
Thank you. Gillingham hyphen Teague.
Okay. You tell me. I try to follow directions, sometimes I fail. Mr. Skelton's here this evening. Do we have any questions with regards to this proposal? I do want to note that there was a, a commitment made at the APC, which was appropriately notarized, written, so forth. I know our city attorney also worked on some other additional language. It's all included in the agenda as well. Any questions?
And it was actually a commitment to the council, the age restriction was.
Correct.
I worked with council, the developer on that.
Councilor Dart?
Could we talk, Lauren, about the paths in and around this development? I think there's been a lot of discussion. I don't know if we've landed on, yeah, on the path. It looks like there's going to be a path running parallel with Hundred and Sixty-First, right?
Yeah, so as part of, as part of the subdivision requirements, they are required to, to run paths along any external roadways. So right there along Hundred and Sixty-First, they will be kind of sticking in the path. It's currently not connected to anything because Ridge, Ridge Wood was developed before that was a requirement and the NOS property has not yet developed, or they've never dedicated, anyway. So yes, they're, they are required to add that because they do not connect to the Monon, or rather, they, they do not have any kind of adjacency to the Monon. There are, there are parcels in between. We do not require a connection to that, to the Monon Trail at this time. We, we definitely recommended trying to find a way to connect and the applicant, I believe, did, did their due diligence to find a way to connect to the Monon, but yeah, there will be a walking, a walking path around the, the northern pond. And then, yeah. Yep, right there. So there is that little fishing pier and the walking path. She makes that into more usable space and then sidewalks on either side of the road. I'm sure the applicant can comment further on the whole Monon issue, but that is where we are with the connectivity.
If, if the, if the path running parallel with Hundred and Sixty-First going west were to, if you were to continue that somehow, I guess to, is that Oak Road, right? Or is that Oak Ridge? Oak Ridge? Is, is, is there a path on Oak Ridge or would it go? There's a path on Oak Ridge. So it probably makes sense at some point to connect it with Oak Ridge, assuming you could get easement right of way there with these homes to the west. Maybe a little bit.
Yeah, the struggle is how close they are to the road, as you can kind of see. Might need to be some acquisition there.
Yep.
We, we have a patchwork of this, of these challenges throughout all of Westfield, to be frank, particularly in a couple of our districts. Councilor Heron's district has that. Councilor McCarty's district may, has some of that, but then some areas, there are newer subdivisions and they may be connected. I'm a hodgepodge as well, just in, in individual districts. But it is something to be considered for future budgets and also appropriations of potentially trying to connect those walkways and trails as well.
There, there was a commitment made in regards to extending the path and potentially extending the path in the future and the city council would, or the city would cover that through a TIF commitment? The mayor, you want to speak to that?
That is correct. However, the city will not be participating in any land acquisition. We're not going to eminent domain to get rights to the trail. If the developer can consolidate land for a trail, we would build that with TIF dollars.
And I, I can give, give you a quick update. We've had a very positive meeting with, I'm sorry, Matt Skelton, Church, Church Hiddle and Antrim, one sixteen North Union Street here in town, here on behalf of Epcun Communities. The owner to our northeast, it's actually the building that Duke Energy leases today, is a, he is a trail enthusiast and we had a very positive meeting. We don't have all the details worked out. There's a citizens easement and a lift station back there, so we're going to have to get permission from citizens and we may ask the city to help us speak with them. We've reached out a couple of times and just haven't received any word back, but it's, it's been fairly recently. And then I think I, I need to get with Madam Attorney here and talk about an easement that was granted to the city in the past by the developer of South Oak, which is the, the, the detention facility to the east there that you can see in the northeast corner of that exhibit. There's a way through there and I think the city has, has already been granted the right to do that, but that's something we, I need to firm up, so.
So if you were to take your pointer there, where would the, potentially, where would the trails start from this development?
Well, the, the, theoretically.
Would it come out the?
I don't, I don't know that this is. It's not working. Oh, I can use the mouse. Theoretically, it would come, it could come right up this way.
And over?
And, and along here. And there, there's a lot to be, I mean, that, that does not influence Epcun's interest in this site, although it would certainly complement not only for, for Epcun, but also for the Ridge Wood folks. They were excited about that option, that potential as well.
So going forward, the city would pay for the asphalt sidewalk to go in possibly as long as the land is done by the developer?
That is correct. We would use TIF revenue to pay for that.
And there, it looks like there's obviously some sort of drainage and stuff, so it's, I'm guessing there'd be bridge work and whatnot that would have to go on and?
We, we've done some evaluation of that and it's, it's doable. I mean, it's not all dialed in yet, but it, there's a path forward, no pun intended.
Also, I want to thank you for listening to my last minute request for the, the sidewalk around the pond and the fishing pier and then the overlook on the eastern pond. I appreciate that.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner this evening? Discussion? Need a motion and a second?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four thirty-seven?
Second.
A motion made by Councilor McCarty, seconded by Councilor Dart. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda this evening is ordinance twenty-four dash forty-four, North Point PUD Amendment, Commerce Park Area Three. We have Mr. Crabtree.
In, in place of Dane, I will be recorded, or I'll be giving this intro, so good evening, members of the council.
I need to look up a little bit quicker.
For the, for the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item presented before you this evening is the proposed amendment to the North Point PUD, specific to thirty-six point six acre portion of the development, which comprises the Commerce Park Three subarea of the PUD. The amendment proposal proposes to modify architectural standards and modify the minimum building height standards in the specific district from thirty-five feet to forty feet. This item was introduced at the August twenty-sixth council meeting, at a public hearing at the September third Plan Commission meeting, where the workshop meeting was waived and a unanimous favorable recommendation was sent to the council. As such, it is up for adoption consideration this evening. Matt Skelton is here from Church, Church Hiddle and Antrim for any questions and I am available for questions as well. Thank you.
Any questions this evening? We need a motion and a second?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash forty-four, North Point PUD, Commerce Park, Area Three.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Dart, seconded by Councilor Waniger. Any further conversation? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We have ordinance twenty-four dash forty-eight, amending provisions in the Westfield, Washington Township Unified Development Ordinance, Tree Bank. We have Ms. Gillingham Teague here this evening.
Thank you. This one will hopefully, hopefully be pretty, pretty quick and easy. So this item is really just providing a way for developers to, to waive and pay a fee in lieu of plantings otherwise required by our, our UDO and PUD landscape requirements. So due to site-specific issues, be them, you know, extra-large drainage easements, just a cramped site. There's occasionally situations where a developer just cannot fit all the trees on their site. You know, they're planting trees that have no chance of, of living long lives just so they don't have to go back and do a variance or do a PUD amendment. Obviously, that's, that's not in anyone's best interest. So in this revision, we would allow with the, with the blessing of the Parks and Recreation Director or their designee, most likely the Community Development Director, staff can, can waive, excuse me, staff can waive certain plantings. Yeah, and charge three hundred dollars per tree for each waived tree. Pretty simple. And yeah, all of that money would go into the grants, the green space beautification fund, which would be used for improvements on city-owned property as well as a potential HOA grant program to be announced. Yeah, to be developed pretty soon. Have you answered any questions?
Thank you. Councilors, you probably also remember from the last council meeting, we had an extensive presentation by Director McConnell as well. Any conversation this evening? Seeing none, this, this ordinance is up for its final consideration. We need a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash forty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Heron, seconded by Councilor McCarty. Any additional conversation? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't have my mic on, but I did hear you. Thank you, Councilor Deppner. Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to new business this evening, we have Resolution twenty-four dash one thirty-four, which is the common council, the City of Westfield, Indiana approving and adopting amended inter-local agreement between the City of Westfield, Indiana and the City of Noblesville, Indiana. I think we'll probably have a couple of different questions on this, but first we'll cover some of the legal pieces and then talk more about the practical matter with Director Todd, but first, Ms. Glazer.
Sure, so I will give a little background and then pass it over to Kevin to explain further. This is actually one of, I think, the first things that I talked about with that team when I came here was getting this fixed. I guess since back in two thousand eight, there's been an inter-local agreement between us and Noblesville. We clearly don't have a city court, so our ordinance violations, to my knowledge, have only been going to Noblesville City Court exclusively. And there was a desire from Community Development to tweak that inter-local agreement. Nothing substantively except for removing the requirement that UDO violations always go there. So we have worked with Noblesville's administration and their attorney to just tweak the inter-local only to say that some of our ordinance violations will still be filed in Noblesville. UDO violations do not have to be filed there and then it will be up to us to decide appropriate venue. The administration has just informally signed off, this has not been in front of them yet. They wanted you guys to consider this first. And again, everything else, we just left exactly the same that's been in place for fifteen-plus years. Kevin has anything else to add about the history?
Yeah, not, not a lot to add, other than just kind of reinforcing the idea that this, this just gives us the opportunity to send our code enforcement cases to perhaps a different venue than Noblesville City Court. They would go to a county court in, in that instance. I think that's pretty common for places that don't have their own city court to send code violations to a county court. So just gives us that option to, to pursue that if we think it's necessary to do so. Send it to a court that maybe can handle those types of requests a little bit, a little bit differently than, than a, than a local city court could. So again, not requiring that we do, but gives us the option to, to do that. And, and talking with our legal counsel represents us for any given case to kind of make the best decision on which venue petition should be filed with. I guess just also piggybacking off of what Caitlin mentioned, that, and not changing anything else about the inter-local agreement. And my understanding is all like traffic tickets and those sorts of things currently go to Noblesville City Court and that will continue to be the case. This is not amending that part of the agreement. Really just focusing on code enforcement items, giving us a little more flexibility on venue.
Very narrow focus, code enforcement only. We're able to, with appropriate legal counsel, kind of pick and choose our, our venue for the potential filing of those cases.
Correct.
Thank you. Any conversation or questions this evening?
Kevin, if, 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 if one approved and you did go to another court, would you have to enter into another agreement with, with them? Or how does that work with, if there's any distribution or fines assessed and collected, how that's split?
Do you have any response to that?
I would have to talk to council that currently represents us for this. I'm not currently doing this, but I can certainly talk with. currently doing this, but I can certainly talk with her and talk with Kevin Stewart and get some information back, certainly. Because there is information in here about how things are split between the cities. So I could dig into that and speak with her as well. Back to you guys.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Any other discussion? We need a, for potential consideration this evening, we need a second and a motion. Excuse me, a motion first and a second after that.
Motion to approve Resolution 24-134?
Second?
We have a motion made by Councilor McCarty, seconded by Councilor Huff. Any further conversation this evening? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waninger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Our next item on our agenda this evening is Resolution 24-135, the Common Council of the City of Westfield, Indiana regarding the Amendment of Economic Revitalization Area, South Park. Ms. Jelenus is here this evening, and hopefully I did not murder your last name.
It was close. I'll take it.
I tried.
For the record, Claire Jelenus with the City of Westfield's Economic Development Team. It was close, you know, it's fine.
I even have it spelled out phonetically, and I can't read my own handwriting.
No, you're not the only one. So the resolution before you is a request to expand the existing South Park Economic Revitalization Area, or the ERA. The goal with this is to include all parcels located within South Park for consistency and cohesiveness. So there is a map at the very bottom. Yeah, perfect. So the blue parcels outline what's included in the existing ERA. The yellow parcels are the additions that we are requesting before you today to add to the South Park ERA area. Why are we doing this? Couple of reasons. We want to set a mechanism in place that encourages continuous investment and improvement into the South Park real estate of the area. We also want to force applicants applying for incentives to adhere to the qualification standards and requirements as stated by law when you put this in place. And lastly, it prepares us for future attraction and expansion projects for parcels located outside of the existing South Park ERA. I do want to note that with this expansion, what it doesn't do, it does not guarantee real and personal property incentives for projects that might come down the pike. It also does not impact any of the existing operations of the businesses already located in South Park at their current state. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions this evening, Councilor Dart?
This does, does it or does it not open up the door, though, for existing businesses that are there to come and ask for incentives? So they could, right?
They could.
It's not just for the vacant property and...
Correct, yes. If they want to invest in the real property, or if they attract a new tenant that brings in really nice personal property, it opens the door for us to negotiate. Does not guarantee.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor?
Was there any requirements of notifying the existing property owners that are going to be included in this?
No.
Question?
Not that there wouldn't need to be. I'm just curious if there was any notification to them.
Question on the reason for the boundaries. So we have a couple of parcels there immediately adjacent to 31. What was the thinking or reasoning for not including that? Or was there a legal ramification for not being able to?
No, no legal ramification. We foresee those properties along US 31 to be in a whole different development. So we just wanted to focus on South Park specifically for this one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from counsel?
What's the piece of property up in the northwest corner, that little square there? Is that a residential? What is that?
That's a substation.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, so we can't agree with that.
Like to.
I know, it's a really nice corner, isn't it?
Any other questions? It's a resolution this evening. We need a motion and a second?
Motion to approve Resolution 24-135?
Second?
A motion made by Councilor Dart, seconded by Councilor Heron. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waninger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Resolution 24-140, which is limiting the tax rate payable for 2025. This evening, we have the city's financial advisor, Oscar.
Thank you, Council President. For the record, Oscar Gutierrez, boundary consulting, municipal advisor to the City of Westfield. The resolution before you is quite simple. It is ultimately stating that the administration will retain the tax rate of 71.75 per every $100 assessed value. This has been the rate for the last two years, and the city is not intent to raise it beyond that. Another note is that out of 119 civil cities in the state of Indiana, this is the 10th lowest tax rate, and we understand a couple of the cities ahead of us will be increasing there. So we should be bumping up a couple of more spots. Sections two and three, if you have any questions about those, it is ultimately saying that these are all the funds that will have a portion of that levy that is assessed against the value, every $100 of value of residents. Where those will go, the debt service funds is section two. We're allowed to go above 15% of what the annual payment is as an option to try to keep that tax rate steady. That's not our intent this year. And then everything else, all the other funds, for example, the general fund being there, we are still going to be applying for the next resolution, which is levy appeal. And until we are approved or disapproved, we want to have the flexibility to move funds around to maintain that tax rate with the goal to put it all under the operating general fund to maximize the income tax dollars that we are allotted. But I think I went too far in the weeds, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Oscar. Any questions this evening about tax rate payable, limiting the tax rate? Seeing none, it's a resolution this evening. We need a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 24-140, limiting the tax rate payable for 2025.
Second?
We have a motion made by Councilor Waniger, seconded by Councilor Huff. Any further conversation? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waninger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Carrying on, Resolution 24-141, which is appealing for an excess property tax levy. Go ahead.
Thank you. And this is continuation of the previous resolution. The state allows municipalities to grow by the non-farm tax income average of the previous six years. And/or they can decide to cap it at a specific percent. This last year was capped at 4%. So any municipality can only grow their budget operationally by 4%. There are appeals based on growth, which we believe that the city qualifies for, and the $4 million figure is the maximum that we would be seeking to get. We believe that actual number that we're eligible for is roughly $3.7 million of levy appeal. Again, this would be an ongoing operational dollars that could be sustainable over time. And one of the things that we have been focusing on is a way to receive more income tax dollars. The income tax dollars are directly affiliated to the levies that municipalities impose net debt service. So by being able to capture more of the levy appeal, it's a better alternative than to what other municipalities do or school districts, which is to issue a lot of debt to maintain their tax rate, because that doesn't factor into the local income taxes. Obviously, for schools, that's not an issue, but for this municipality, it is. We believe that if we are successful on receiving the levy appeal, in addition to that, we would receive at least $2 more million of income taxes that would otherwise go to other municipalities. And then the second one is almost a failsafe for us in case we fall short of our calculations. The shortfall appeal is something that if the county certifies the assessed values at X, and they come out to be less than that, usually, because let's say like a Meyer or a Coles decides to appeal, and there are individuals and law firms that made a business of this, and they appeal and are successful, and then the certified rate is lower, as a safeguard to municipalities, you can then do a shortfall appeal to try to capture the dollars that were based on that certified rate by the county. Now, again, I don't believe that we will have to do a shortfall appeal, that we will be able to get to the 71 cents just with the regular three-year growth factor appeal. But I just wanted to explain what those two were and the reasons that they were there. But happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions, Councilor Waniger?
Yes, Oscar. In the past, the city's done this in the past, and actually, probably even back to the town, it's gone through the levy appeal, correct?
That's correct. And while that was not the advisor's, my understanding.
Okay. And not sure on this, but, you know, I think in the past, we've done this after we've got the levy from DLGF. Is there a reason why we're doing it ahead of the curve on this one?
You have to put in for the appeal beforehand. So this is just you going through the process.
Okay.
The appeal will not be until you get to 1782. So multiple steps have to happen. We have to advertise for it, which is, that is in process. I believe that the clerk treasurer is working on re-advertising for when you will have your public hearing. In that Form Three, there will be a line specific to levy appeals. So these will be showing on that form, and that has happened in the past as well. By October 31, further documentation has to be sent to the DLGF. Once that happens, you receive a form called 1782. At that point, this is the part where you're talking about after you receive it, you kind of tell them where you want, how you want the sausage to be made, per se. You want to put it all in here versus here. So right now, we're just giving ourselves all the options. So when we receive that form, we're trying to capture everything on the levy appeal because of the benefit of the income taxes. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, that answers my question. As you, I think you stated earlier, if we don't go through this process and for the additional levy, those basically additional taxes go to other entities.
Yeah, unfortunately, the income taxes are not collected where they're generated. So it's really whomever has the highest tax rate gets the most net of debt.
That's all questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, this is a resolution this evening. We need a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 24-141, appealing for an excess property tax levy.
Second?
We have a motion made by Councilor Waniger, a seconded by Councilor McCarty. Any further discussion? May we call the roll?
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waninger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We have ordinance 24-50, which is additional appropriation for the park impact fee. This evening, we have Ms. Carrie Tolan with us this evening. Good to see you.
Hi. Good evening, council members. For the record, Danielle Carrie Tolan. Before you, I am asking for an additional appropriation for Simon Moon Phase Two. Currently, we are finishing up Simon Moon Phase One of Scope Work, and that was just the earthwork and the drainage for that part. This next appropriation is for everything, all the vertical elements, all the playground and the buildings and the boat launch. So that is getting ready to kick off here later this fall. And so we just need the additional appropriation to get that going.
Thank you. Any questions this evening?
Danielle, this was the amount that was originally budgeted for this project?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, there's two phases.
No increases?
Nope. Nope. And actually, we saved in Phase One, significant amount of money. It was originally engineered for about 8.2 for the first phase, and we got it under 6.8 million. And then this phase is 5.5 million. And this is just the remaining funds that we need for the project.
So if I understand, this was budgeted, it's just sitting in a fund that needs appropriated to be...
Correct. Yep. Yeah, park impact, it's in park impact and then in investments. And so we just need that funds.
You said it's 5 million for this, but...
Yes. We don't, we have some of it in the fund ready to go for it, but not the rest of it, because it was investments and in park impact fees.
We just have to release those dollars, if you will.
Yep.
Any further conversation? What's the timetable on the construction? Just residents want to know when these things are being done, when they can enjoy them.
Great question. And McConnell's on vacation. So we are, you know, like I said, Phase Two is getting ready to launch at the end of fall here. And I believe, if it's end of, I can email you and you can let your...
Well, I appreciate that. I'm sure somebody in the newspaper business would appreciate that, too, so.
You both can call me.
Thank you very much. This is a resolution this evening, but it does require a public hearing. So we'll open up, we'll open up the public hearing at 8:07. Is there anyone from the public here that would like to address the council with regards to ordinance 24-50? And this evening, we'll, again, we've opened it up at 8:07. Don't everyone move at once? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing as well at 8:07 as well, with no one coming forward. This is an ordinance. This is the first reading. So we'll consider this for potential adoption at a future council meeting. Thank you as well. The next ordinance for consideration this evening, for introduction, excuse me, is ordinance 24-51, which is an additional appropriation for a special census. Ms. Carrie Tolan?
Good evening again, Danielle Carrie Tolan. For the record, before you, you do have an additional appropriation for us to activate a special census for the City of Westfield. This amount is approximately $1.8 million. But the, I'm pulling up my other data sheet, so sorry. So I have it before me. The important thing about this is knowing that, doing the special census, we will recoup our $1.8 million within about 18 months. In total, we will gain about $9.6 million, knowing that our population is much higher than what our current census is telling us.
Could you explain a little bit how we're going to recoup that? What exactly that means?
John, excuse me, John Rogers, Director of Enterprise Development. There are certain taxes that are driven by the population, road tax, MVH, the cigarette tax. There are certain taxes that are driven by the population. What we've done is calculated those current rates at the current population, multiplied at times what we believe the delta is, and then that's how we come up with the numbers that where we believe we're going to be and the dollars will be receiving once the census is certified. And that'll probably happen in December of next year.
So that's, assuming that they agree with your analysis, right?
No. The revenues that are generated, again, I'll use MVH as an example, are driven by the population. Part of that calculation is the population. So if the population went up by 22%, then those dollars will go up by 22%.
So the Census Bureau is going to do their census, and wherever it lands, that will determine ultimately the dollars...
How many additional dollars we see?
And the payback. So the payback could be 18 months, could be 24 months, could be nine months.
Exactly.
Right? I mean, depending on...
Depending on where that number actually comes in, correct?
Correct. And I think, Danielle, you said you're appropriating now because we have... And I think, Danielle, you said you're appropriating now because we have to get an application in?
That is correct, yes. They have to, well, we've already submitted, and the date is already secured, but them, for them to get going, we have to give them payment to the Census Bureau.
So is it May, is that what you said, May of next year is when this would kick off?
Yes.
And then we would have an answer by December?
That, that, I, exactly, before that. I've asked, the reason we picked the May 1 date is that pretty much gives us a guarantee that we will have the number sometime in that latter part of November, early December, which also gives us time to get it in front of the governor and get the signature.
Does the city utilize any resources to assist in this, or are we...
We, they are responsible for the census, they're responsible for hiring the census workers, responsible for all those activities. We will, you all, all of us, we're all going to be out there making sure that the population, the residents of the city understand this is happening, and asking them to participate from the moment, you know, we get, start getting some documentation in front of everybody, we should be doing that. This year is a little different than the last one, in that we can do a part of the, you can participate on the internet. So we should be trying to persuade folks to participate, to census on the internet. That will drive down our cost and could potentially mean that we'll get some of this back at the end of the project.
Yeah, it's, when you do it online, we, they don't charge you the same as they would if they had to put boots on the ground to do the work. So we're already talking with Kayla and Communications to have a campaign to get the word out, to let residents know, one, why it's important, and, two, it's our tax dollars that are being spent to do this, and we can save each other money by being proactive and getting online and filling out. Not to mention, you won't get harassed with phone calls, people knocking on your door, all the other things that come with the census. I'd also add that this is, this tactic or strategy is pretty common in Hamilton County. Fishers and Carmel, when they were rapidly growing, did a similar strategy. It's silly not to. I mean, we're not capturing tax revenue, we should be based on our population, and my hope is we do this once over the next 10 years, but depending on how development goes over the next few years, we may do it again. I think Fishers did it twice in a 10-year period when they were in their rapid growth phase. So we kind of have to see how development goes, what you guys approve, what comes before us, and we'll just take it on a case-by-case basis.
The only other resource that I know that we will have to provide is a space for them to, to do their work, right? So whether we use the back of city, you know, public works side of things, or we will have to have a secure place for them to administer their staff, and make sure that the staff gets out to the, to the public and into the community.
And I'm fairly certain that town or city has done this in the past, and there's some past councilors out in the audience, I see their head shaking, that we did this at the town-to-city transition, transaction at that time, and did we do it one other time after that? I think we did it twice in the past.
We did it in 2016.
Okay, so we've done it twice.
Danielle, what's the anticipated duration? What's their anticipated time to start and finish?
April to November.
April, November, okay.
Yeah, now, they could finish up sooner if we get our public to respond.
It's a lot of public awareness, if you will, on the behalf of the city.
Yep.
Any further questions, conversation? It is a ordinance, it does require a public hearing this evening. We'll open up the public hearing this evening at 8:14. For those that wish to address the council with regards to ordinance 24-51, with regards to additional appropriation for special census. Well, that's quite all right.
I tried to send an email during this meeting to you all, because I was supposed to be somewhere else tonight. But anyway, I did send an email. If you didn't get it, let me know. But we did this in 2016, and we kept asking for what was the result, what was the result? Can I pass these down, Mark, or what? Because two of the tax, two of the types of taxes, okay, did not give us growth. In fact, in 2021, which was the last year the special census was in, in fact, the cigarette tax was less than it had been when we started. The casino tax stayed flat, and then in 2021, went down a little bit. So I could have made up the chart with it all on there, but I've had a lot of other things going on. But we asked for a report from the city, I know I requested one, to show how much money, because it was publicized that we were going to make $1 million by investing $626,000. I would love to be proved wrong, and somewhere, there's this money sitting, but in the annual financial reports that, that are on the gateway, it doesn't show increases in these taxes that even would have covered our cost. So before we go into another one, I would hope somebody's doing their due diligence and really checking out these numbers and the trend that they're going, because on what I copied you, you'll see that the taxes went up with the 2020 decennial. Now, mind you, at that time, the 2016 was hoping to go to a second class, because in error, the city didn't realize that that only happens with the decennial, and we've all learned that since then. But I'm just a little concerned about this. I'd like to be proven that, that there was a ton of money and it went somewhere. I don't know what account it would have gone into, it doesn't seem to show up in the annual financial reports, it doesn't show up in the sustainability reports. So the question is, did we make more than it cost us, and how much more did we make before we, this is almost three times the cost, and it sounds like they expect big returns, but just please look through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, we all know who you are, but just for those watching online, if you could just please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right.
Lyndon Ass, 1122 East 161st Street.
Thank you, Lyndon.
I'm sorry, I was...
No, we, obviously, but just for those watching and so forth, we appreciate it.
So these are the only taxes, cigarette and casino? I'm trying to understand, two of the others, yeah, so I guess where does it all net out in your, from your standpoint, Jonathan? The calculations that we've run are based on the SIG tax, general fund, SIG tax, CCI, ABC gallantage, MVH distribution. All of those are affected by the population.
So right now, on your cigarette tax, do you have it for this new calculation? Do you have it going up or down?
We have it, we have it going up.
Can you provide those to us in the email?
Yeah, we can send that to you, yeah.
Just because we're in the middle of a public hearing piece, we did open it at 8:14. This is, seeing anyone else that would like to comment in the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 8:18. Again, this is a introduction, a first reading, we do not, it's not necessarily eligible for consideration this evening, but is there any further conversation or discussion this evening by councilors?
Yep, Jonathan?
John?
John, per the request from Noah, can we definitely get those numbers on how these were, how all these taxes are calculated over the next...
Yeah, I can make sure that happens, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, that ends the official agenda this evening. Do we have any city council comments this evening? Victor, do we have an APC update?
Yeah, Chad was there with me, so he can give it, too. Noah was also there for a little bit. So last week was our longest APC meeting yet this year, didn't get home until after 10:30. On our consent agenda was 227 Park Street, located between Greek's Pizza and Italian House on Park Street. It was at Board of Zoning previously in the year for approval. This is what is owned by the Lozara family, and very excited for what the potential for that building to be. Items of business, we had Eye Beach that we saw tonight, the courtyards that we saw tonight, those are only two items of action. And then the public hearing items, we had ordinance 2445, Clayborne Farms. All the councilors up here were familiar with it. We received 30 letters, almost totaling 100 pages, through email correspondence, and then also, there were an additional 23 residents who spoke during the public hearing. So needless to say, a lot of work yet to be done on that project. And ordinance 2444, the North Point PUD amendment, we also took action on that and saw that this evening. Ordinance 2448, that was the tree bank policy, we took action on that this evening. And ordinance 2447, which is the food truck policy, again, we had a presentation that was similar to what we had here at the last council meeting, and we're looking to get that possibly with a recommendation at the first October Planning Commission meeting to be back here at council. So again, if anyone has additional comments, questions concerned on that, please let me know, and that was all.
Thank you, counselor. Any other council comments this evening?
I'm going to butt in.
Seeing none, mayor?
I'm butting in before mayor, because I got your answers, so I wanted to make sure I...
Fair enough.
...told you. So Phase 1 will end around Thanksgiving, and Phase 2 will be completed winter of '25.
Great, thank you.
You feel better now? I'm very good. I don't really have anything to add, other than, as you know, President Tam, I'll be out for the next two council meetings. Next council meeting, I'm in Boston with the Indy Chamber, the leadership from Purdue University, and the leadership from Indiana University. We're talking all things biotechnology, and if you're familiar with Boston, that's kind of the epicenter of that industry, and we're looking for best practices of how we can bring some things back to central Indiana to capitalize on that. And then the next council meeting, I believe I am on vacation, so we'll see you guys back at the end of October.
Mayor, I'm glad you're doing that leadership change trip, as somebody that's gone on those trips in the past with that delegation, those are pretty fruitful, and they've resulted in a lot of positive results in the past, so thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion adjourned, do we have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.